Currently Beaumont's current total deviation is 29.23 percent. So there's a big enough gap that requires us to do this process and actually rebalance the wards. Currently Ward Two has the most population with 10.82 above the ideal ward size, has 31,925 people, and Ward Four is the smallest of the wards at 23,502. That total deviation is 18.41 itself, so when you combine those, you get that number which is shown as 29.23 percent. So what we started off was our initial attempt at draft map A, it was just with the criteria that council has established, going in and just doing a, well, probably be the most easiest or cleanest cuts or moves from districts or from wards. In this draft map A that we presented, we were able to accomplish a total deviation of 4.04 percent. That's well underneath that 10 percent maximum that you're needing to get under. We were able to maintain the majority black population in wards Three and Ward Four, and there's very little change as far as the other demographics in each of the other wards. But one thing we want to emphasize that this map meets all of the criteria that we've established. We observed it against the Voting Rights Act standards and principles and then the other guiding lights in this whole process. What changed in draft map A as compared to what is the existing boundaries map? You have voting precinct five and voting precinct seven. So if you see on the right is the existing boundaries map, you'll see voting precinct seven was initially there in Ward One, and that was given to Ward Four. Then you have voting precinct five coming out of Ward Two and giving that population into Ward Four. That was able to bring the population out of Ward Two to make it substantially less and equal amongst the whole city. We also had to take a little bit out of Ward One because that was also a relatively big ward, so bringing the voting district seven into Ward Four allowed us to get that substantially close population, as substantially close to the ideal as we can. So just a basic overview of the things that changed. The only districts that were redrawn in both of these maps were districts One, Two, and Four. District Three was relatively close to that population that we're looking for at 28,192, but Ward One would have 2,544 less people, Ward Two, 2,569 less people, and then Ward Four is picking up the sum of those two numbers, which is 5,113. This was a map that was presented at last council meeting, and from there, we had additional changes or considerations that were presented here in the draft map B. So in draft map B, it's very, I guess, difficult to tell where it is from a holistic view or just from this map itself, but what I've done for the council is highlight on draft map B where the change occurs. So initially, we had all of precinct five coming from Ward Two and going into Four. In this version of this draft map, you'll see that the street that is East Caldwell, that is now going back into Ward Two. So everything west of East Caldwell Street going up to Calder, I believe down to the railroad track, that would then still remain a part of Ward Two rather than going into Ward Four as part of the whole voting precinct. So the change that that made as compared to draft map A was very minimal. It was less than 1 percent across the board, whereas we had a draft map, a total deviation of 4.04 in draft map A. Here in draft map B, you're having a total deviation of 4.99 percent. So you're still meeting that total deviation standard, getting underneath 10 percent. What it actually did is strengthen the black population in wards Four just slightly, and you know, the numbers changed very slightly from what was in draft map A to draft map B. Here, we take a little closer look at the changes. On the right side, you have the existing boundaries, and on the left, you have what's presented in draft map B. What you'll see, the same as in draft map A, voting precinct seven still comes out of Ward One and goes into Ward Four, but what changes is voting precinct five. Rather than that whole precinct, you're having a split of that precinct at the East Caldwell Street line, and it's relatively clean, straight down split, but it is indeed a split of that voting precinct. So you have that area that's starting at the northern part of Calder Avenue and going down to the railroad track, now going back or remaining into Ward Two. That was the only change that occurred between draft map A and draft map B. No other voting precincts were split. As we said, the total deviation then rose to 4.99 percent. Districts, I mean wards One, Two, and Four were redrawn. You had about the same number of people leaving wards One and Two. Ward Four gets a little less people than what is presented in draft map A, but it still gets us to those substantially equal populations to be abiding by those principles we set out. So there's no substantial retrogression in the minority voting power in wards Three or wards Four, and also a proposed map. So as of right now, the remaining steps would be to engage the public in a public hearing, which has been set for the next council meeting, and then we'll actually have the adoption and final vote, in which you will decide on which of these two draft maps you would like to adopt as your city council boundaries. The last product that you will be getting from us is that final report, which is essentially like the report we would have prepared for pre-clearance, and it essentially just maps everything that we've done from the beginning of this process. So every agenda, every minute, every presentation, all of that will be provided to you in a physical and a digital file. So with that, that's all I have for you today, but I'm here to answer any questions as far as how the wards have changed or what your preferences are.
Thank you. Councilmember Gatz.
Thank you, Mayor. So to be clear, I asked that we consider, at the request of several of my constituents that had contacted me, to draw the revised map, proposed map B. And since the time I've been on council, I've always represented the Caldwell area, which is precinct five. I've enjoyed representing the Caldwell area. We were able to create a neighborhood association during the time that meets monthly. I've attended almost all of those meetings, first under the leadership of President the late Eddie Hall, and then now under the President of Jeremy Grogan. We currently meet every month, and in fact, Caldwell Neighborhood Association wished me happy birthday yesterday on Facebook, so I've got a great relationship with them, and they know they can count on me. However, several constituents in the Caldwell area did contact me and express their preference that they continue to have me as their councilman, and wanted to know if we could redraw the map so that their neighborhood be included in Ward Two, remain in Ward Two. So you did that, and what we're really talking about, and what I wish we would have, is a comparison side by side of draft A and draft B, because what you will see is we're really only talking about a couple of blocks and not very many households, and that's why the numbers don't change very much. So my request, when it comes time to vote on it, and I know it's not today, but my request will be for us to consider map B over map A, and again, just for the public, what that is. If everyone is familiar with the Lindbergh Overpass that you take off of College to kind of cut through Caldwell to get into the West End, once you come across the Lindbergh Overpass and you get into the Caldwell addition, that street becomes East Caldwell. And what I'm asking is that everything to the west of East Caldwell remain in Ward Two, as it has historically, and everything to the east of East Caldwell would go into Councilmember Duryo's ward. I'd love to keep all of Caldwell. They're great people, and it's a great neighborhood, but I've recognized that because of redistricting, every district is required to have essentially the same population or is reasonably close. And that's why Councilmember Neal has to give up some of his ward. That's why I have to give up some of my ward, and I say my ward, I mean Ward Two, the ward I represent. That's why we have to change. So that's the purpose. I had constituents contact me, ask me to do this, and one of the things that I want to assure everybody in Caldwell, that even if they go into Ward Four, and I'm confident Councilmember Duryo will be responsive to their needs, they can still call on me, and I'll be happy to respond to their needs as needed.
Any other comments? Councilmember Samuel.
I'll just respond. I did visit with Councilmember Gatz with his concern, particularly from his constituents, but since we are here, we've always, we represent citizens, every citizen of Beaumont collectively as a body. And I do understand some of their concern, but I think it's very important that we make our decisions not based on personal feelings or personal biases, and the statistical data is important. And one of the main problems, and I did explain to Councilmember Gatz, that would be the first time, if we were to go with map B, that would be the first time that we've gotten away and split a precinct. We've never split precincts, and that's what map A, as I understand. Map A moves the entire precinct into another ward. If we were to go with map B, part, half of the precinct would be in one area, one ward, and the other half would be in the other. And that sets a precedence that we make decisions based on feelings or based on our ideas, but I just think that it's better to follow some statistical data or some scientific data as a basis of why we do what we do. So I do appreciate you bringing that to my attention, Councilmember.
Mayor.
Sure.
I want to say one thing. It doesn't put half of precinct five in Ward Two. It puts a sliver of precinct five in Ward Two. And correct me if I'm wrong, but if all of precinct five went into Ward Four, it would actually be more retrogressive than if that sliver remained in Ward Two. Is that correct?
What I could say is that the black population, if it were to take all of precinct five into Ward Four, it would diminish slightly, but it's so much of a minimal gain or minimal difference that it won't make much of a difference. So it goes from about 60 percent to 59.65.
Right, and the whole point of doing this, of course, is to comply with the Voting Rights Act.
Correct.
To make sure that we don't have retrogression, that we're not trying to gerrymander wards in such a way that the minority community is going to have their voice cut out, and that's the whole point. By going to map B, it actually makes the minority community's voice in Ward Four a little bit louder, not a lot, but a little bit louder than it would be if the whole precinct went into Ward Four. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. Councilmember Duryo.
Mr. Pollam, is this something, you've done this, I'm pretty sure, many times at other cities. Is this something that's normal, have a request like this and move a line a few blocks, as long as it's not a big difference?
Yeah, and you know, the criteria, it actually contemplates that. It says, where possible, we'll move whole voting precincts, but you know, in an instance like this, or at the desire of council, we can go in at the smaller census block level and then move streets according to how, you know, the demographics entail or making the numbers work. In other cities, we've started at the census block level and, you know, had to go from there rather than the precinct level because it was either just too big or it didn't make sense, it wasn't a full precinct, it was too small of a city. So we've worked in this level before with the census block and moving streets only, and it's not uncommon to do such.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Pollam, thank you so very much, and we look forward to your final presentation so that we could take the vote.
As would I. Thank you.
Now's the time for any citizen that would like to speak on or make public comment on the consent agenda items number one through four. Please complete the green slip to the back of the room, fill it out, give it to the clerk to the, to my right, your left. She will call your name when it's time for you to speak. The green light will come on, you will have three minutes to speak, and the red light will come on at the end of your three minutes. Thank you.
I don't have any at this time, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I would like to call for a motion for the consent agenda.
Can I run the green slip now?
Sure, you may. Okay, public comments? Okay, thank you. So again, at this time, I will call for a motion for the consent agenda.
We'll have to approve.
Have a motion in a second.
Mayor, before we vote on it, discussion, I would like to request that item E on the consent agenda be tabled so that we can discuss that item further in executive session.
I have a request for item E to be pulled. Motion in a second.
Question before we move forward.
Councilmember Turner.
This is to the city attorney. This item that's on there listed, is this something pressing that needs to be addressed immediately? Is this something that we actually have a little time to discuss further?
So you have time, but it is pending litigation, so, I mean, there is, we're on a court schedule, so that it's not immediate.
Councilmember Samuel, did you?
That was the question. It's not on the docket as of yet.
So it's in, it's a federal case, so you know, we have a, we enter into a docket schedule, so it's in Judge Montalais' court who does a nine-month trial schedule, so it's set for trial.
So.
Can we amend the motion then?
I can amend the motion to say that I'd like to request that it be placed on the next available executive session discussion.
No, we need to have a motion to exclude item E.
Well, not yet, there's.
Are they still discussing?
The table motion.
To make sure they don't forget that.
I got you.
Yes, so you were saying, delay it for, to the next opportunity?
Yes.
Would that impact the trial docket?
We can discuss it with opposing counsel, but I don't think it will be too egregious. I don't think it'll be a problem.
It won't be a problem.
No, ma'am, I don't believe so.
Okay.
I'll withdraw my second. I'll withdraw my second.
No. Councilmember Neal made the second for...
You guys will vote on the table? And then, then the motion to approve the consent agenda automatically dies, and so then you'll have to do a new motion for Items A through D.
Right.
So, again, I, I move that we table Item E until the next executive session, where we can discuss it at that time.
I'll second that request.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on the floor.
Discussion.
Councilmember Duryo?
I'm not aware, we discussed this already, and I thought we was all moving in a certain direction, and I haven't received any other information that would make me change or to understand why we're tabling this and not voting on it. We hadn't had another meeting since then, nobody's told me anything.
Councilman Duryo, I was contacted by Councilman Gatz, and he requested additional information, although I did provide that information in, I guess, a memo and in written form to council. It was my understanding that Councilman Gatz and Councilman Neal wanted that information to be directly relayed to council in an executive session, so it could be discussed with council at that time. And so, I don't know if it's, if it's necessary, that it's intended for anyone to change a vote, but it's just so that all council members can be privy to the same information that was previously provided.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of tabling Item Number E, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
Nay. The motion carries. Okay, may I have a motion for Agenda Items A through D?
I move to approve Items A through D.
I have a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. May I have the reading of Item Number One, please, the city manager? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Item Number One is to conduct an election for Mayor Protem. According to the city charter, the city council shall elect one of its members as Mayor Protem for one-year term. The Mayor Protem shall perform the duties of the mayor in case of the absence or inability of the mayor to perform the duties of the office, and if a vacancy occurs, shall become the mayor for the unexpired term.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of Item Number One, and I would like to make a motion for Chris Duryo to be appointed as the new Mayor Protem. May I have a second, please?
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion? All in favor of approving Item Number One, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Congratulations, Chris. Thank you. May I have the reading of Item Number Two, please?
Yes, ma'am. Item Number Two is to, council consider a resolution authorizing the interim city manager to submit an application to the Texas General Land Office, or GLO, for Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program funding related to drainage improvements along Phelps Road, and authorize the mayor and interim city manager to act as the city's executive officer and authorized representative in all matters pertaining to the city's participation in the CDBGDR program. Tropical Storm Amelda severely impacted the city of Beaumont and the city's desires to increase resilience to disasters and reduce or eliminate the long-term risk of loss of life, injury, damage to and loss of property, and suffering and hardship by lessening the impact of future disasters. The projects detailed within your agenda item and application will address major drainage improvements in the southern parts of the city of Beaumont along Phelps Road, which were identified as at risk due to, during Tropical Storm Amelda. The CDBGDR application request amount to be filed will be one million dollars for construction, acquisition, as well as professional services. The application will require cash, cash match based on CDBGDR application amounts and request amount in the total amount of fifty-five thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixty-five cents for construction activities committed by the city of Beaumont from the general fund. The total project cost is one million, fifty-five thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixty-five cents, again, to include construction, acquisition, and professional services. Grant, if the grant is awarded, funding would be available in the capital program. Administration recommends approval. Should point out that in looking at this area affected by Tropical Storm Amelda, in the general area, we saw about in excess of two hundred homes affected during that, during that storm. Again, the administration recommends approval.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of Item Number Two. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Have a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion? Councilmember Gatz, then Councilmember Turner.
Bart, we had previously prepared, had prepared for us a comprehensive flood drainage study, and it recommended many, many projects, and they prioritize some kind of on a cost-benefit basis. Was this particular project one of those listed in there?
Neither of these were specifically called out in that because they're too small a scale. If you remember, the master drainage study called out rather large projects. They, I can't remember what the smallest was off the top of my head, but I don't think any of them were a million dollars or under. I think they were many orders of magnitude greater. So, for this particular grant, we were made aware of it in the spring of 2020, before it was released for our ability to apply for it. The maximum award under this grant was a million dollars, which we maxed out in this case. We were required to find a project area that met the LMI goal for it, and so we looked for areas in the city that were victims of repetitive flooding based on our documentation of the past, and they were a concise, small enough area for us to be effective within the award amount. So, that, that's what we were going to...
Okay.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Turner.
Mr. Manager, throughout our, the rest of our agenda, I noticed it says a lot of these grants are asking for matches. For the people in the community and citizens watching, can you kind of explain to them the match process and what does it consist of? Because I got a few phone calls, and I want to make sure I gave them accurate information I want to verify.
Sure. Yes, sir. So, as you can tell from today's agenda, we are constantly, in our various departments, looking for grant opportunities, depending upon where those grant opportunities are coming from. Sometimes they're from the federal government, sometimes they're from the state government, sometimes they're even from private sources. Every grant is different, and so sometimes there is no match, but usually there is, and the reason being is, the idea behind it is that a applicant has some skin in the game. In other words, they're, they're going to be participating financially in, in the grant application, so people are just not, you know, applying here and there, and they don't take advantage. So, most grants, again, do have match, matches, again, it varies. Sometimes it's five percent, sometimes ten, sometimes twenty, twenty-five percent. You'll see a little bit later in the agenda, there's a fifty percent match. The other thing to keep in mind is sometimes it's a cash match, where we actually have to submit cash, or sometimes it's in kind, sometimes it's forced labor. So, there's a very, there's various ways, again, depending on how the grant is written as to how you achieve that match, so...
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of approving Item Number Two, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. And the reading of Item Number Three, please.
Yes, ma'am. Mayor and council, Item Number Three is to consider a resolution authorizing the interim city manager to submit an application to the Texas General Land Office, GLO, for Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery, or CDBGDR, program funding related to drainage improvements in the Laura addition, and authorize the mayor and interim city manager to act as the city's executive officer and authorized representative in all matters pertaining to the city's participation in the CDBGDR program. Again, similar to the, the prior item, this grant application will attempt to address major drainage improvements in the Laura addition subdivision of the city of Beaumont. The CDBGR, CDBGDR application request amount to be filed would be a million dollars for construction, acquisition, and professional services. The application will require a cash, cash match based on the CDBGDR applicant, application amounts, in the amount of three hundred and ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars for construction activities, with the total project cost being one million, three hundred and ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars if approved. Again, funding for the match is available in the capital program, and the administration does recommend approval.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of Item Number Three. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion? Councilmember Gatz.
Just a question. What kind of drainage improvements are we looking at doing over there?
Both the previous project and this one is going to regrade the ditches and replace the existing culverts with new pipes that are larger. In a lot of these areas that we're ditching currently, the culverts are, are the problem that we run into. The more culverts, the more expense. If you look at this handout, Trey, would you mind passing that down? You'll see, this is an example street that will show you a profile of the ditch line and the culverts, and you can see that it goes up and down and impeding the flow. So, both the size of the culverts can, can be a culprit in having the capacity, but also just the fact that it's not on grade. And you can see in the bottom profile, you know, after the project's finished, not only will the culverts be increased in size, but the grade will be lined out to where it flows properly.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Councilmember Duryo?
Bart, this, these two projects here, they're separate projects from the citywide ditching that we're doing?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other discussion or questions?
Mayor, I didn't get a, I didn't get to hear who's second on that item.
Councilmember Samuel.
Councilmember Samuel, thank you.
Okay, if there's no other discussion, all in favor of approving Item Number Three, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. You have the reading of Item Number Four, please.
Yes, ma'am. Item Number Four is to consider authorizing the submission of an application to the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department for the Non-Urban Outdoor Recreation Grant in order to, in order to, let's see, non-urban, excuse me, Non-Urban Outdoor Recreation Grant with a representative from staff to carry out the process of the grant on the city's behalf. As you're aware, the city has thirty-six parks across, across the city that it maintains. You may be aware that Imagination Station at Central Park is in need of replacement. There have been recent updates and maintenance made on the equipment at Imagination Station, but weather conditions have required additional repairs. The Texas Parks and Wildlife Grant may provide the city an opportunity through funding to replace the Imagination Station. The grant program award amount is up to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars with a fifty percent match. In this case, the match flexibility allows in-house labor, equipment, and materials, as well as cash. The funding, again, would be Texas Parks and Wildlife, Non-Urban Outdoor Grant, along with the local match. Funds would be available in the capital program. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of Item Number Four. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion? Councilmember Gatz, Councilmember Duryo, then Turner.
If we're fortunate enough to receive this grant, do we have to go back in with exactly what was there before, or do we have some flexibility to put different types of projects on that site?
No, sir. We'll be, we'll have flexibility. So, as y'all may be aware, these wooden play structures like, like Imagination Stations were kind of very popular back in the nineties, and you see them in cities really across the country. The issue with these structures, of course, is even with them being treated lumber, like, you know, like a privacy fence or a deck at your home, you know, eventually it has to be replaced. And so, cities across the country are having to face the same issue. And so, to answer your question, we're not, we're not necessarily recommending the exact replacement of this type of structure, but we hope to provide something even better.
Thank you. Councilmember Duryo?
Two questions.
Yes, sir.
On this grant, is it, if we get it, would it just be for the Imagination Station? Or is there enough money in this grant to do other parks, projects in the city?
For this grant, because of the size of Imagination Station, and again, I think, you know, people are very sentimental, because a lot of folks were involved in the construction of it, they take their kids there, their grandkids there for really decades now. We, it needs to be, I think, significant enough. So, to answer your question, I think this grant would only cover Imagination Station.
Okay. And one other question, can you explain, you said match flexibility, and we could use in-house labor, equipment, and materials as a match? Is there a formula that you figure out how much that labor is worth, and you have to come up with that number for the match?
Yes, sir. So, if, if awarded, we will have to report back up to Texas Parks, and part of that would be is if we are going to submit, you know, again, let's say, forced labor as part of our match, yes, we will have to document how many hours, what the rate of pay is, et cetera, in order to justify that to the state.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner?
First and foremost, I'm a big quality of life guy, so I want to compliment staff on actually moving towards looking at grants and doing things to identify our parks. Me personally, the median age in Beaumont is roughly thirty-three years old, and this is a family city. So, I think parks are essential when it comes to quality of life in the city of Beaumont. And furthermore, I'd just like us to be a little bit more, have a little bit more of a proactive approach. I am appreciative that we are addressing Imagination Station, but the reality is, we got a little negative press about Imagination Station that was literally one of my favorite childhood parks when I was a kid, literally thirty years ago. So, you know, if we can figure out a way to strategically, you know, address, or at least have on file some of the issues going on at our parks, you know, that'd be greatly appreciated. But I will say, I want to compliment staff because y'all actually listened to the community, listened to the cries, and y'all went aggressively and made moves towards reaching the goal, and I want to let you know I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Also, City Manager, I would also like to thank you and staff for aggressively going out, because we did, we got a couple of bad reports and over Imagination Station, but they were legitimate reports. There were some areas that were, could have been very, very dangerous to children, and so, again, they reported it to us, we conveyed it to staff, staff has made a move, and we see now that it will be fixed and it will be repaired, I'm sure, with new equipment. And everything gets old. Everything needs a facelift, everything needs a little touching up every now and then. So, it's great for the community, it's great for everyone that go out there. Of course, I wasn't that fortunate to play there, AJ. But for all of those that do go out, use the park quite frequently, even the employees at Baptist Hospital, you know, they're out there walking on their lunch breaks, and the park is, is really, really utilized. So, that's a great thing, and like I say, another great quality of life effort that's going to change that area. So, thank you. With all of that said, all in favor for approving, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. So, at this time, it is now for comments, public comments. If you haven't already, fill out the green slip at the back of the room, please do so. Hand it to the clerk to the front of the room, your name will be called when it's time for you to come up and speak. The green light will come on at the beginning of your three minutes, and the red light will come on at the end of your three minutes. Thank you.
J.D. Roberts, fifty-four seventy-five Landry Lane, Beaumont, Texas.
To the mayor, council, good evening. My daughter tells me, she says, Dad, you need to write stuff down because you're getting old. So, I wrote it down. First of all, I'd like to give thanks to the city attorney for showing up to Noyah County Courthouse and... County Courthouse and speaking to the kids. And a six-year-old that was listening to her wanted a laptop, so he wanted me to tell you thank you for the laptop. Secondly, I'd like to thank Congressman Taylor Neal for sponsoring SOC once again. And last but not least, I'd like to thank Mike Getz for showing up for the tenth year. That was our tenth year anniversary, and Mike showed up again, and I just want to thank you. I know the other city councilmen might have been busy, but I had to give y'all, y'all props. But I'm here today to talk about some things that myself and some of the citizens have talked about when it comes down to selecting of a new city manager. And a great majority of those citizens who I've talked to believe that hind within the ranks, if someone is qualified, is better than starting over again the same as someone else might do. I stand here today asking you as a representative for some of the city employees and the citizens of Beaumont to seriously consider hind from within the ranks. You have worked with Chris Boone, and I'm sure there is no question in your minds that he is capable of not only doing the job, but doing a great job for you and the citizens of Beaumont, Texas. Today was a good example for me to see just how a, a wheel machine worked. You guys work together, I mean, I'm, I'm applaud, I like to, because for the first time I've come here, no argument, no bitter, I mean, it's just, it's just pleasing to see how y'all communicated and did what y'all did today. So please, listen to what I had to say. Chris, thank you for what you're doing. Continue doing the good work, and we're praying for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rodrick J. Brown, twenty-three ten Sunny Perkins, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, Mayor Muftah, Mr. Samuel, distinguished council members. My name is Rodrick J. Brown. I am the son of a renowned radio personality, Boy Brown, who in nineteen seventy-two was savagely and unjustly beaten and paralyzed from the neck down permanently by members of the Beaumont Police Department. Excuse me for a minute. I obviously do realize and understand that no one here today in this room was of age in seventy-two. So I fault or blame no one here with this tragic incident. We were all of adolescent age. I was only twelve at the time. When my life was drastically changed, it affected me both mentally, emotionally, and sometimes physically, and it still does to this day. Yet absolutely nothing was ever done to financially support or accommodate my family. And all the future reality that ha, we have endured, now, once again, it's happening right here in Beaumont. It's all over again, and it's opened old wounds. I am calling for justice for Christopher Shaw in the name and for my father, Boy Brown. I look you all in the eyes and ask you to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ricky Jason, ten seventy-seven Magnolia, Beaumont, Texas.
First of all, I thank and I praise God. I'm community activist Ricky Jason, the protege of the late Dick Gregory, and I want to take you all back to nineteen seventy-two when Mr. Fame Entertainer, Mr. Boy Brown, was beaten. His body was swollen, he laid on the concrete, police officers let him lay on the concrete for fifteen to twenty hours, just like they did Christopher Shaw. They couldn't take his photo because they couldn't hold his head up. And it's sad, and they got some good police officers, don't get me wrong, but they got some bad ones too. This police officer, Mr. James Gillum, what you did to Christopher Shaw, picked him up in the jailhouse, slammed him, dropped him on his head and paralyzed. That was evil, that was hateful, that was mean, and no matter what color you are, that was racist. And I say to, to everybody that, that man could be anyone of y'all's child in here. And we're going to risk it all because Beaumont, Texas is fix and explode. We're going to risk it all for one crooked, bad cop? We want to see the audio tape, and we want to see it now. And I agree with the Brown family, this has wakened up Mr. Brown out of his grave. This touched the family. The world is watching Beaumont, Texas. I think we need to look at the audio tapes, the world need to see it. Ms. Zena Stevenson seen it, and there's a lot of corruption going on out there at the jailhouse that people have just got tickets. Y'all need to look into that. Mayor, I beg you, and this board, I humble myself and beg you to please let us see the audio tapes. I beg you to please, please look and let us see it. We need to see the tape. The, the, his lawyer saw it with the, with Ms. Zena, but the world haven't seen it. What are we hiding? Are we going to protect one bad police officer and mess up Beaumont like Jasper Texas is because Jasper is ruined because of James Burden and their corruption? If it wouldn't have been for Dick Gregory and them coming down here, they'd have been covering it up. I worked on that with Dick Gregory and them. So I humble myself, and I ask y'all to please show the audio tape. And I agree with the Brown family by reopening their father's case, because back then they had Klansmen threatening people and all kinds of stuff. Christopher Shaw can't walk no more. Imagine you can't walk no more because the police slammed you on your head while you was handcuffed and they had other officers standing by him. That was hatred. God bless you.
Thank you.
Virgil Brown, twenty-three ten Sunny Perkins, Beaumont, Texas.
How you doing today, councilmen and women, ladies, mayor? Yes, Virgil Brown is my name, Boy Brown's son. And I want to just see some of the liberty and justice for all by reopening my dad's Just things got to happen right here. Let's get this thing straight. Let's let Beaumont do the right thing. That's all I'm asking, do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
David Redman, thirty-six thirty-five Augusta Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon. My name is David Redman. I'm a former city employee of twenty-six years where I worked in the Public Works Engineering Department. When I supervised school crossing program, prepared budgets for, for several other programs, including the streetlight program. I'd like to thank our former city manager, Kyle Hayes, my good friend, for giving me that opportunity. It was an honor to serve our citizens while keeping our school kids safe. By the way, Councilman Durso, mother-in-law, was one of my employees as a school crossing But let me start by saying that I love living in the city of Beaumont. I believe that Beaumont is one of the best cities to raise families. I believe our present leadership, all you guys are doing such an outstanding job. I also believe under the present leadership of our incoming city manager, Chris Boone, our city continues to grow and is headed in the right direction. As a city employee, I've worked with Chris Boone and the Building Coles Department while we were having new construction businesses with their drawings to be in compliance before construction started. I also witnessed many occasions Chris going above and beyond for the business owners. Chris is a man of integrity, he's knowledgeable, cares about the employees, and believes and loves this city as much as we all did. I'm a strong believer in promoting within, rewarding employees who's deserving, and believe Chris has proven in his acting role that he can do the job. Let me close by saying our respect and support for whatever decisions you guys make. But I'm going to leave you with this old saying, if it ain't broken, don't fix it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jessica Lambeth, two thirty-two West Caldwell, Beaumont, Texas.
Hi, I wanted to thank the mayor and the council for letting me speak. This is my first city council meeting. I came here to be a part of Beaumont, to try to get more involved in my city. I think the parks idea is a great idea, but I did want to talk about the redistricting, make a comment on it. Mike Getz said, said that he would wish that all of Caldwell would be in one district, and I live in the Caldwell area, and we do have a good neighborhood association there. We have meetings, we have a Facebook page, we all gather together, and it's a very close-knit neighborhood. And I'm not familiar, I believe the gentleman is from out of town, that redistricted district, right? And he possibly does not know how tight that neighborhood is, and I believe that it should stay in one district, whichever district it goes to. But I believe that Mike Getz has done a great job for representing us. I know I can email him and I can count on him, I'm sure I could count on anybody here. But I just would like to see the whole neighborhood together because we are a very close-knit neighborhood, and that's all.
Thank you. Come back.
Christopher Jones, ten forty-five Dusset Avenue, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Today I come to you with heavy concerns about an issue that collectively I know we, that we can resolve. Volunteering across this city, I am noticing a trend that I can no longer sit by and say nothing about, especially when many believe that this is the greatest opportunity for citizen access with this current council. Many neighbors of the city of Beaumont have been exposed to biases when it comes to the management department staff, some of the department leaders, some of the crews of the city of Beaumont. One of the biases I would like to mention today is restrictive in nature and have been noticed and experienced prior to and during this current management and staff. Residents, supporters, and I are conflicted on how plans and potential proposals we would like to bring to council only be verbally discussed, to some extent, to members of management and/or departments of the city. Without notice, the conversation and progress just so happens to be stalled and/or halted until the idea or one like it pops up outside of the community or the proposed area. One of those cloned ideas is the long-awaited South End Charlton Pollard Greater Community Garden and Orchard, also known as the Charlton Pollard Historical Neighborhood Association. Most, if not all of you, have some of the same passions to resolve issues that plague our communities. I'd like to make you aware that many of the community is losing hope, not just in you, but believe the capability or even the desire and will to resolve issues from the city management and some of the departmental administration is not in your favor or ours. Management and department leaders unwillingly, unwillingness to work with us is what many perceive to be a directive from our elected, but I can attest, we have noticed that is not always the case. Our Neighborhood Association for five years now have been awaiting the opportunity to propose a community garden and orchard to council, strangely identical to the proposed presentation you all received recent weeks ago. Ironically, an outside entity presented to you similar ideas that we have been communicating and planning with community partners. The rest of what I have to say is will be submitted to council. Thank you.
Kevin Allen, twenty-three ninety Park Street, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, and to the city councilmen, and to everyone that's here. I thought I had a little problem here with my car being taken today, but I really don't considering what's been going on about the injustices, this person being handcuffed and hit on the head, but I really don't. My car, this is the second time that I've came here, and the first time I think I noticed that, I called the law with the incident in my neighborhood, twenty-three ninety Park Street. They never showed up, they never called. So this past, the day after my birthday, which is the nineteenth or twentieth, I got a sticker on my car. I'm going to make it short because I'm coming back. I got a sticker on my car, so I came down to the city, the police department. So they gave me the name of the person, and they told me to call this number because he's on duty. He never called. So today, when I woke up, my neighbor said, "I think your car is gone." So, the car is gone, and it drives, but it, but they say it's abandoned, but I drive it. So here it is, I thought I had a little problem with that car being gone, but I really don't. I'm really praying for y'all guys, y'all got a lot going on right now. And whatsoever a man saw, that's what he's going to reap. I know a lot of y'all may go to church, and some of y'all may not live according to the standard that, that's being held up as far as truth, but you want to do the right thing, no matter what, no matter how many odds are against you, you want to do the right thing because you have to give an account, we have to give an account for the things that we do. It's not on your children, it's on us. And the way the world see you, the way the world see you, how you may smile in front of people's back and you agree with unrighteousness going on, that's going to be on y'all guys, individually so and collectively so, because you're agreeing on this here. But my condolences go out to the Brown family in front of this other guy that's been going through some things, that has injustice fell upon him. Because, city councilman, it's on you, and I'm imploring you, the car is nothing now, considering that it was taken today, I'd get that back later on, but I, it was, it was something big for me right now. But it, but hearing all this that's going on is really, really small to human life. It's really, really small for telling people the truth and doing the right thing. And I really want to thank everyone here for giving, allowing me the time, mayor, to stand before you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Addie Allen, ninety-six ninety-five Gross, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, council, mayor, city attorney, and all others. I, I miss you because I haven't been here a while, but I keep up with what's going on. I miss you because I haven't been here a while, but I keep up with what's going on. And today, there's so much, three minutes won't hold it, so I'll have to come back next week. However, I stay in Amelia and I understand there's gonna be a tower out there. A couple of weeks ago, a Piper or Pippa, Councilman Neal would know what I'm talking about, and a Cessna collided in North Vegas. And I don't know if they were a towered or a non-towered airport. But I'm still concerned because I thought that there were gonna be little baby planes out there in Amelia. But we have passenger planes that's coming through and at record speeds. So our finest Beaumont Police Department can't keep up with giving them a ticket. Then their flight patterns are really interesting because they're all over the place. So I'm wondering even if this is gonna be economic development and we're gonna have a municipal airport, who's taking notes? Leave that alone. We have a street that was repaired because there was sewer over on the end of Landis. And as a result, we got the street fixed. But somebody forgot the children over at Amelia that they have to walk in the street. And the street is so short. I saw kids on my way here riding their bikes in the street and when the cars come, they have to get in the ditch. The walkers, we have to get in a ditch when a car passed by. And last October, the city came out, they did numbers on all the pipes because we are a ditched street. And we haven't heard anything. So subsequently, when it rains, the water goes underground. So I don't know, we eventually gonna have a problem. Every time that it rains hard, I have water backup in my bathtub. So the city has come out, no problem, they haven't found the issue. So I ask, when you did the evacuation plan or the safety plan about a regional horn, and I was told it's too expensive, that's in the notes. Dallas-Fort Worth area has it. In October, we experienced a lot of disaster in Amelia and throughout the city. Didn't hear anything from the city. So where is the parity? Where is the concern other than industrial? There are people here and we need to be taken care of. And my condolences to the Brown family that have to, you know, experience what they've gone through with things consistently happening. I'm gonna sit down.
Thank you, Ms. Addie. No, your three minutes are up.
May I have another minute?
No, ma'am.
If council says that I can, I think I have seen that done, that you asked.
And I've allowed you, I've allowed you to continue even after the buzzer went off.
Okay.
And I've asked for respect of the three minutes.
And I will respect you. Thank you and have a good day.
That's all I have, mayor.
Thank you. At this time, I will allow councilmember to make public comment. And I will start with you today, Councilmember Durio.
I just would like to thank the mayor and council for the Mayor Pro Tim appointment. I appreciate your confidence, amen, and do a good job.
Well, I appreciate your accepting and thank you for accepting. And I know that you will do a great job. Thank you. Councilmember Getz.
Thank you, mayor. I practiced law in the city of Beaumont for 30 years. I participated in many, many jury trials and I respect the jury system. That doesn't mean I always agree with the verdict they deliver. And that was a case and a verdict in Jefferson County yesterday. One of our youngest and finest police officers had her life taken from her because an 18-year-old kid decided to drink more than twice the legal limit, decided to drive his car the wrong way on the highway, crashed into the police unit, killing the police officer and seriously injuring her partner. Jury came back with 20 years. He's already been in jail for two. He'll be eligible for parole and eight more. So at the age of 28, he'll have the opportunity, if parole is granted, to have his life back. That police officer's family will not have her back. I agree with the jury system, but they don't always get it right. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner.
Positive, as I prepared my notes for today, the reality is it is a little negative energy in this room today. So to the families, you know, if I can, Mr. Manager, just give me an update on what's going on, where we at with everything. I refuse to act like I didn't hear it and ignore it. I just like to have an update to see where we at and what's going on with everything. But to kind of change tones, because I always like to be in a good mood and a positive person. But like I said, it's very obvious that the energy is kind of negative. And Mr. Chris, if you can, whatever garden plans you have going, I would like to sit with you. Been a councilman for a year and two months, I've never seen them. So I'm interested in knowing what you're trying to propose for that particular neighborhood. But on the flip side, Pastor J.D. Roberts saved our children, know your county courthouse. I'm a huge believer of actions speak louder than words. Contrary to what anybody say, I see you moving with actions and you are doing things consistently with the kids. And I want to go on the record and let you know, I appreciate you. Fortunately, I was out of town that particular day, but I'm gonna go on the record. I want you to know I appreciate you in front of everybody, all right? The next thing I would like to go into to talk about is we have several back-to-school drives coming up this weekend. We know our kids are gearing up, getting ready to go back to school. And it's very important that we of the community, let the people in the community know what's actually going on. So I know on July the 30th, which is this upcoming Saturday, at Smith Middle School, that's in the north end. Smith Middle School will start at 8:00 a.m. until supplies last. So please get there early. I'm pretty sure they have a lot, but it is limited supplies. And then following Smith Middle School on the other side of town, which is World 4, at Odom Middle School, you have another back-to-school drive starting 9:00 a.m. And it says until noon, but the reality is you want to get there early because sometimes those lines are long. And I do an annual back-to-school drive and I've been doing it for eight years. And this makes my eight year and I partner with a nonprofit group called YDIA. It's gonna happen at Alice Key Park. And we don't do the typical back-to-school drive. We have water activities out there for the kids, we have games, we have food, we do free haircuts. The beauticians do the little girls' hair. Because the reality is a lot of families are in unfortunate situations and they don't have the means to take care of what they need to take care to get back to school started. So I want to invite everybody out to Alice Key Park this Sunday from 3:00 until 7:00 p.m. And we don't only let the people go through the line and get things that they need, but we engage with the children and we give them things that we need, that we know they need going forward to go to school. So with that being said, I know the energy felt that way, but I do, I'm a firm believer that Beaumont is moving in a different direction. And I'm big on positivity. So yeah, we had some negative things at the podium today, but I don't want to act like they're going upon deaf ears. We hear y'all.
Thank you. Councilmember Felschall.
Thank you, mayor. Congratulations to Councilman Durio. And happy birthday to Councilman Getz yesterday. This is birthday. He's probably 39, 40-ish. So happy birthday to him. And our prayers do go out with the family of Officer Yarborough Powell. Considering the verdict that came down, our prayers do go out to that family. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Samuel.
To say congratulations to Mayor Pro Tim Durio.
Thank you. Councilmember Neal.
Thank you, mayor. Congratulations, councilman. Look forward to working with you, Mayor Pro Tim. Look forward to working with you in that position. Kind of piggyback off of what Councilmember Turner said. I want to thank the citizens for coming out today and voicing y'all's opinions and giving us the opportunity to take that into consideration. Yeah, something else that's been kind of heavy on my mind, and I noticed Councilman Felschall and Councilman Getz mentioned it today. But it just seems like every time we listen or watch something on the news, it seems like something negative is happening to one of our police officers. Between the verdict yesterday, or you back up one day earlier this week, we had a police car that was shot at. Seems like it was about two weeks ago, we had some officers that were dry-fired on. And it's up to us as a council to make sure we hold our police officers or put them up on the pedestal they deserve to be on. Even Ricky Jason talked today about the good officers that we have in Beaumont. You know, we're in a position right now where the city and the police department are up for contract negotiations. And I think that we as a council need to make sure we do our part to make sure we give these guys a fair contract. So with that, I would request that we get an update on that next week.
Thank you. Ms. City Manager.
Yes, mayor. Just real quickly, I'd like to echo, I think, what was shared earlier. I'd like to extend my congratulations to Dean Conwell, Freddie Willard, and the team for bringing beat baseball to Beaumont, the World Series. The information I have is 37 teams throughout the United States, Taiwan and Canada, the Dominican Republic, all coming to our city. And I think the estimate is 1,700 room nights. So that's great for the economy, of course. And I'd just like to extend my congratulations to Mayor Pro Tim Durio.
Thank you. And the city attorney.
Just congratulations, Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you. Barrett.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Todd.
Congratulations.
Okay. Antina. Okay. Thank you. Again, I would like to again congratulate you, Chris, and I look forward to working with you. Be ready, it's a busy schedule. Sometimes I'm not always available. There's times where I'm expected to be in two locations at one time. I know it's a lot of me, but it's not that much that I could spread myself in two places at one time. So thank you so very much for accepting. And to my Mayor Pro Tim, that was one of my first appointments to appoint a Mayor Pro Tim. And I just want to thank you, Councilmember Samuel, for stepping up and being one of my very first appointments, for having my back this entire year. Being the first time and a new mayor, and with your experience, it was so rewarding to be able to work with you, to know that I was able to depend on you and also depend on your years of experience of being here. So I want you to know that I really appreciate it. And thank you for a job well done. Thank you. In addition, you've heard us talk about B-ball. I did a resolution today about beep ball. And what it is, it is baseball for the blind. The baseball actually beeps so that when they hear the beep, they can bat the ball. And again, like the city manager Chris Boone said, that there are teams from all over the United States here. I enjoyed being out there yesterday, walking the field, meeting all of the different people from all over the United States. It is an opportunity for Beaumont to support this activity. Not a lot of cities will step up and even support an activity like this. So to Dean Conwell and Freddie Willard, I truly, truly applaud the CVB and that staff for what they've done bringing that event here. Because as a matter of fact, ABC National News is here in town and they're also recording it and making news of it. So thank God that Beaumont will be shown in a brighter light and for doing something really, really great for people with disabilities. And so again, hats off to Dean Conwell, Freddie Willard, and that entire staff at CVB. To the Brown family and to the case of Christopher Shaw. Christopher Shaw case is in litigation. It is a legal matter that we cannot make any comment on as to what happened in 1972 with the Brown family. As Jay Brown said, we, most of us, were children. We don't know all of the facts, we don't have all of the material. It was many, many years ago. And unfortunately, it happened here in Beaumont, Texas. We did hear what you said. We as a council have the moral obligation of doing what we have to do as a council. And that's all I will say on those subjects. Also, to the beep ball, again, it's at the Chris Quinn Soccer Field. They will be playing all week. If any of you could go out there, please go out and support this. And even if you have some time to volunteer. They lost a lot of volunteers. They were asking for about 500 volunteers per day. Because again, the people that are playing are blind and so they need every type of assistance that they can. But I want to give a shout out to Homewood Suite Hotel. And only because I had so many of the people from out of state literally walked up to me and said, that was the best staff that they have ever dealt with in accommodating all of the participants. They say they literally labeled all of their hygiene products in the rooms with Braille labeling. And so I'm gonna make a special point to get over to that hotel by the end of the week to thank them personally. Because when you have your vision and you can see and you're not dependent on someone else, then Braille is their lifeline. And it's everything to them that we have with our site. So again, I just had to do a shout out to Homewood Suites and I will get over there to personally thank them for what they've done. So I want to thank each and every one of you for coming. And again, spread the love and we'll see you at the next meeting. Thank you.